The flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, equal and civil with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated. Bro call.
Member Anderson, Vice President Gibson.
Here.
Member Greco.
Yeah.
Member Swallow.
Here.
President Suedo.
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve the October minutes?
I make the motion for the minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I do oppose. Tammy, you had put on open forum, nobody spoke in the open forum. That is not so, Earl, the police chief did.
Oh.
I want that put in there before it goes to State Board of Accounts and I would like to have a copy with the time and the date.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the town bills?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the fund and appropriation reports?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. At this time, I have an executive director of Indiana MS4 Partnership here. Would you please stand up, let them know your name, and you can have the floor.
My name is Reggie Korthaus. I serve as the executive director of the Indiana MS4 Partnership. I served as the MS4 Coordinator for the state of Indiana through the Office of IEDM for 15 years, so some of you I have seen before. And now I work for a company called OHM, and we're working with you on your permit compliance for stormwater.
And then you'll tell us what needs to be done, Reggie, would you please? Or the council?
On October 23rd, IEDM set up their construction personnel, Rob Beck. He performed an audit over two of the minimum control measures, which were illicit discharge and construction. And through that audit, we found input from him. We did very well on the audit, and I think he was pretty pleased. I submitted a report to him following the audit. I talked with him today, and he's pleased with it. Where we have to be concerned is if the town decides to proceed with any construction, new homes, new development. I had heard that there was some of that, which will require we go back and update the ordinances to give guidance to the contractors and developers. One of the things we do here in Northwest Indiana for Lake Porter and Lepore County, we have a group called NYSWIP, which is the Northwest Indiana Stormwater Advisory Group. These are all of the municipalities under the stormwater permit, we have 47. We meet the first Tuesday of every month and provide educational opportunities to the MS4s. But then in February, we hold a training for contractors and developers. So this is required under the permit, and instead of each community doing it on its own, I put it together where they all come to the community center in Maryville. Last year, we had 300 contractors attend, so it's really growing. So this will be helpful as you look at what you're going to do as far as contractors and developers. To give you a little heads up, we're in the fifth year of the permit, it ends in 2026. The new permit is being written now. The new permit is going to be different. It's going to be called a tiered permit. It'll be tiered based on population, okay? And the first tier A is where the town would fall, 1 to 35,000. And so as IEDM went through all the things that they are looking at for the tiered permit, we requested that they have public comment, because there are some things that just don't work. And so we'll pursue that. But anything that's changed and anything that will make a difference for you, I'll make sure that you know it, okay? I have, I gave Robert a copy of the report that we sent to IEDM. He told me today that it's pretty much accurate the way he wants it, so we'll be getting that report back soon. Any questions?
No, so we do have to, our ordinance, we have to update them, because they've not been updated for 15 years.
Right. The one, after reading through your ordinances or ordinance, the one part that you're missing is you haven't had any construction in town in like forever, okay? So now, if you're looking at buildings or a developer coming in, we have to have guidance for that person in the ordinance, so that they follow what your rules and regulations are. And we have so many small communities that have already done this. Purdue University came out and did an ordinance guidance document that we can use, so it's not reinventing the wheel, it's using what's there to help you.
Well, I know the building instructor on our ordinances, he has a guideline to go by. And, because we've had duplexes and we've had some houses built here, very few, but he goes according to those ordinance we have in the ordinance book.
I would, I would, after reading it, I don't know whether, I don't think it came from the Purdue things, but if there's any change in it, Purdue has a stormwater meeting every July, and they really work hard with state, with IEDM, to be on the same track. So it's helping communities, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Okay.
Okay?
So we can take the guidance from Purdue and just put it right in our ordinance?
Pull what you want.
Yeah.
Okay? The guidance is designed for big communities that are building constantly. I'll use Chesterton as an example. So you would have something smaller, pull out what you want, what you think is applicable to your community, and then we put it in the ordinance.
I think the most we did around here is about two or three houses, maybe four.
Well, they're talking about sand dunes, remember?
Yeah.
So that's what she's concerned about, so.
The thing that you have to be.
There's no sewer back there, so.
Right. Aware of is making sure that the contractors, and most of them really do now, know the stormwater quality regulations. And we train them to do that, and we give them certification after the training, so hopefully you have just interviewed the ordinance.
The paper that I handed out when we were at the last meeting, that one had all that in there, and I did state that they needed to be, had to go to that to be certified or have that, because I had to go to it to get certified.
I, we had this meeting today with IEDM, and I printed out an extra one of these for you, and you can take a look at this. This is the proposed tier permit information, so it can give you an idea of where their head's at, okay?
So Reggie is gonna do this for us, but we are going to pay her, there's gonna be a contract somewhere, I haven't seen one yet.
Is there, isn't there one?
Yeah, you got it.
I'm better, because I'm not really retired.
So should I wait for you to be retired or? Before you won't charge me? Okay.
Thank you, Reggie. Does anybody have any questions? I guess not.
Yeah.
Okay. Correspondence, none. Ordinance, none. Resolution, none. Departments, police. Okay, police, I mean, police commission, there is no report. Fire?
Just let you know, we're getting, we're getting close to, very close to having 300 calls for emergency services this year, so it's been a good year for the fire department. And as you know, we had that fire on McKinley Street, the chief just mentioned about it. The family was able to get out, fortunately, and mother and son, 10-year-old, they're accepting donations at Meister School. Town manager was telling me today, so is that correct?
Yeah, Meister is, yes. Tara took them out shopping, bought him lots of stuff, and then Earl came in with his donations and helped him with some stuff that she couldn't get him, so.
If anybody, anybody interested in helping, you know, check at Meister School, because they unfortunately lost everything, so I'm pretty sad. But I don't know, the fire department, if they did, did the best they could do under the situation, so. But other than that, we'll move right along with all that.
Okay, Joe, thanks. Town manager?
So if anybody does want to make a donation to that, come, take it to Meister School, okay? Because they lost everything. They do have insurance, which will help them, but the kid had nothing, so. Anyway, I think Robert has most of my stuff here, Reggie has the other stuff, so I have a, so. I gave you a copy of the water that we're gonna do. Matt got back with us on.
Take it, Robert.
Oh yeah, I already know about this.
Oh, you got it.
About the building, they're still looking for bids, and then I'll let you tell them the rest of the water, so that's all I have right now. We did get our 400,000, though.
We got it.
Let me, let me say something. Reggie, you're more than welcome to stay, but if you would like to leave, you can, okay? I don't want to keep you here if you need to go.
No, I just, didn't feel a little wanted tonight than I thought.
You're fine?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Robert.
What?
I'm just waiting for the water, streets.
Department?
All right, first department. We had the garden department last month, which considering the weather was still successful. And, you know, lower turnout than the last couple of years, but I think that's part of that was weather, the other part was.
The football game.
Well, yeah, the football game definitely did help. So we are waiting on an invoice from Kids Play Stuff to turn into county as the first part of the CDDP grant. We are getting some new equipment for the park, and we're also getting new mulch for the big playground area. We found out that since we're doing ADA equipment and an ADA water fountain, that we can actually bundle the mulch in without having to get the, you know, super expensive.
Yeah.
Play surface that we put under, think of that swing, so.
Yeah.
So we are looking at, we are probably gonna spend the entire grant from out, so. And then, oh, also completed last month, the Alamo came back out and put the judders on the garage and bathroom building.
Oh, okay.
We don't know when they did it, they just magically appeared. Literally, they weren't there on Friday, or, well, Friday they weren't there, people were there on a Saturday.
It does not take them long.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, it was just like magic, the next day.
Yeah, they were there, it was like, okay. So I did pass out some flyers to everybody, these are some things we're looking to do in next year, of course, the Easter egg hunt, which I finally put the correct date for once for the first time. So we're, day before Easter, Saturday, April 4th, we're looking at doing that. We are looking at doing another townwide garage sale, either doing, you know, people can do spaces at the park, or they can pay $5 and be added to the map. And then we're also gonna look at possibly doing a 3v3 basketball tournament for the kids. So, and we're thinking, I, this is still, the basketball tournament's still very rough.
Is that gonna be at the park?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's still a very rough draft, you know, but Tony and I were talking a little bit about tonight, we might do a couple weekends of that and do it in age groups, do like the first weekend is like 15 to 18.
Yeah, because it's gonna take a while for them to do it.
Right. So, so yeah, that's what, those are a few things we're looking at for next year already. Really won't have much to talk about until Easter.
Okay, Joe. Thanks. All right, no, there was no planning commission. Sewer?
Sewer. All right. Sanitary store, all the stations are up and operational. Last of surge protectors will be installed in the upcoming week, as well as other preventative maintenance for the year. That's on first.
Okay, streets?
Streets, streets were plowed and salted with our one plow truck we have. Other town plow trucks went to shop being fitted with a salter blade at the time the storm hit. As soon as it's ready, that'll be put into upcoming plowing rotation. Streets Department also assisted stuff cars as well as shovels for persons with health issues and elderly. Excuse me, I gotta get this in. Elderly, people that couldn't do it for themselves, and Facebook was not notified. Okay?
Okay. Sanitation?
I just did the sewer sanitation.
Okay.
Garbage will be, sanitation's garbage.
It's garbage.
Saturday.
Yes, garbage pick up Saturday.
Is, is, is snow limit for the alleys still in effect?
They haven't told us that, yet.
Because I was wondering, could some people question if they were gonna plow the alleys? And I thought, well, I wonder if Total said anything like last year.
They won't plow the alleys.
No, I know, but they usually say.
Yeah, they have, they have our alert, so I don't know.
Yeah, they, all I've seen so far was the initial Facebook post they put out saying that they're moving it Saturday, and I haven't seen anything since then, so.
Probably don't know, it's supposed to be 50 degrees, so.
65.
Maybe it'll know.
So we'll be flooded.
So they'll need boats to come clutter.
You got that. Okay, water?
Water. MAP water system was provided by Adam Marsh to the vendors to submit their bids for meter head replacement for radio reads, which is right here, I made a hard copy for myself. And the town manager got emails from Mr. Kaiser from Adam Marsh about it. I didn't think anybody really wanted a copy of this, because I have one and the town manager does. If anyone does want a hard copy of it, just ask and I shall provide it to them. And we're still waiting on H and G to submit a bid for an inch and seven eighths pipe replacement to a two-inch to standardize the pipe that serves one and seven eighths to avoid lack of replacement parts and availability of said parts. New taps are being placed, were placed on Riverdale Drive and Lake Station, and tomorrow a new tap will be installed on 34th and California for the four-plex going up over there. And it's all for water.
Okay, let me ask you, and you too, Sue, with water, because they're snow down, are they gonna, they're not gonna be able to read?
You said they are. I'm gonna try to, we're gonna see, it's all depending.
If there's snow, you can't get to the meters.
What happens is, is the heat coming from the ground on the lid and the sun at the same time, it makes an indentation in the ground. If there isn't a foot of snow on top of it and they can access it, I would rather get a true read than having.
So you're gonna dig, if there's snow on there, you're gonna dig the snow off of there?
Do our jobs, that's what we're gonna do. I would rather have a true read than an estimate, because when you estimate, sometimes they're higher, sometimes they're lower.
Well, yeah, that's normal.
But I would rather have a truer read, because that's.
You want people complaining?
Books, and they have to be out by the 19th.
Correct, it's not, it's not a serious, serious problem. We got 95% of it out of the way, if not more.
So you've got 11 and 13, or?
We got 12 and 13.
12 and 13.
And like I said, if weather.
You'll have a flood in 13.
That's what, that's what my goal is, to do that, but as Sue talked about, that if it's beyond our control, then it.
We'll estimate it.
They'll estimate it, but I'm shooting for true reads instead of an estimate.
All the guys don't have waders, do they?
Yes, they do.
Do they?
We, we're.
They all do, because if it's real wet, they need to have those waders on.
They're outfitted to do their job.
Okay, okay. I know you do. Oh, Brenda, you had a question?
I have a question about the, the new meter heads that are gonna be, the automated readers.
Okay.
When will, will they be able to install those in the winter, or are they gonna have it till spring?
Right now, I mean, they do them year-round, but what we're gonna try to do is the less, how we've been doing these since I've been here, is we don't expose those pits to the cold and everything else like that when it drops below freezing.
Okay.
Because that's just to ask you for trouble.
For trouble, for free.
And when they come up with a bid, it's looking at, right now, they just put it out there, and like I said, here at the MAP, they put it in a grid system of where everything is, where the meters are, and all this other information. So first they have to come back with a bid, and then you got, it's.
So probably early spring.
I'm hoping. Hope it early spring. But if they, if they're gonna do it like the weather's been, you know, we just got one freak storm, you know, it's the man upstairs, whether the weather's gonna cooperate or not, you know?
All right, Robert, stormwater.
Stormwater, Reggie just gave her presentation about that, and we're on course to make everything.
We'll go, we'll do what we have to do.
Now, this year comes with our audit, and we have to renew our license.
Has the city, or has the town been the recipient of any alternative fuel vehicles for the police department or the town?
We'll get one for MS4, but we have not got it yet.
It will be in February.
Okay.
So what do we got to do with that?
Robert and I will go.
Wanted to know, because I would try to get you more.
Oh, no, that's all we can afford is one.
Well, if you want the ones that are free, okay, so.
They're not free, you still gotta pay a percentage.
Yeah, we would work to make it as possible.
Then find you some free ones, that'll work.
Yeah, we will, Robert and I will be going December to NERC, because this will be, all be brought up, our New Chicago will be presented with it for a truck, so, so we will have to be there.
Last month, so. But this has been a two-year project.
Just about. So this is the second year, yeah. Yeah, exactly. Okay, we're all ready? Old business, you have any more, Robert?
No, ma'am, I'm done.
Okay. Old business, new business, legal reports?
I've been talking to Frank Capressino, not getting the answers I want, but he says he's gonna present it. The issue, one of the issues was, we have to guarantee that it's all contingent upon us and them getting a fire territory together.
And we knew that.
Yeah.
That was the agreement. That was the agreement.
Hoping that Lake Station would do what it said it would do.
So when is Frank gonna present it? It's only been six weeks.
Things that he wouldn't answer for me. He didn't answer for me.
Yeah, I know very little about the ambulance, what's going on, I haven't been told.
We'll talk.
All right.
Frank, the Lake Station City Attorney has the contract, we're waiting on him.
Okay. But the fire territory?
We don't know, sir.
You don't know yet?
Yeah, hasn't been lived this far.
No. At all.
But we, we will have a one-year contract.
Well, and that's contingent upon them getting us and joining us in the fire territory, but if they don't, so it's a problem, and I'm not very happy with Frank on this one, but we're beggars can't be choosers.
Well, hopefully everything goes okay, otherwise, I don't know what we're gonna do.
And that's it for today.
That's all. Okay, announcements? Any other business that come before the council? Open forum? Comments from the board?
I do have one comment. I had a call about two weeks ago about wild cats on the end of Wisconsin Street. That I guess there's a lot of cats, there's a certain person feeding them, and there is a program, you have to get volunteers from your community, and I meant to give you that paper, I have six copies laying on my desk, so, or you guys can do it, like we have time to do it, yeah. So anyway, it's a community, Cindy Sturbevi from Wisconsin Street is trying to do that, it's trapped in neuter.
And then they bring them back and release them.
You need some kind of community organization, a committee to do it. So anyway, I've been giving Brenda the paper for three days.
And good luck, because they, nobody does anything.
No, I gave three out to the people complaining and told them.
They don't do nothing.
Don't they get, don't they get fixed and then take back to?
Yeah.
Yeah, but you have to have a community organization to do it.
They don't come and do it for you.
No.
They just facilitate you doing it or funding it or whatever.
And the house where all the cats.
They'll neuter and spay them for nothing.
They've been breeding so much, there's literally dozens and dozens.
There've been a pride of wolves.
Well, that, they probably migrate from over there, but it's, literally, you go up to the house.
I don't go there, so I don't know.
The gentleman that called complaining about the snow on his road, then threw snow back on after it was plowed, and then plowed again, and he threw more snow back out there. He goes over there and feeds them every morning, so.
Yeah, we, as, as the town made another effort to talk to this person, he also does it at the park.
That's the same one that's doing it at the park?
Oh, is it? Okay.
No, it is not who you thought it was. I had a little talk with him the night of the fire. And he said, I don't even know where your park's at, Sue. I said, okay, but I'm sure it's.
I think he lives somewhere around up on North Wisconsin Street.
That's who it is, but you gave me the wrong name.
Okay, I apologize. But yes, he feeds these guys, I mean, when he pulls up in his car, he feeds them, so, when he pulls up in his car and he opens the doors and the cats come out of the yards and run and jump in his car to be fed. He needs to stop us.
Can we smell that?
Can we arrest him for?
I mean, can we, if we don't have an ordinance or something, I mean, I don't know.
But I thought we, we have an ordinance, we can find him, you can't feed the. You can't feed the animals at the park.
No, I don't think there's an ordinance.
Technically, it comes under littering, but we have signs up saying.
You do, you're not, you do.
I thought we had our ordinance.
We did make an ordinance for the parks, for people who walk, which includes wild.
Wild feral cats.
So we can hit him with those kind of tickets and keep finding him until he gets the right.
Yeah.
Tony, Joe, you'll have to start writing the tickets.
Well, I mean, if he gets busted and starts getting tickets, maybe he'll stop this.
Do you see him by you? I mean, because, yeah, you do over there, yeah, because you live right there, too.
Yeah, I get a big picture window to see him.
Yeah, he's kitty-cry. So is it Julian?
No.
Is it Tony?
No.
Kenny?
I guess that's.
Yeah, the skinny one?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.